You are watching Access La Porte County, 1097. Coming up next is the March 13th, 2023 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Long Beach Town Meeting, March 13th. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I don't have any opening remarks. We got minutes of the council meeting on February 13th, 15th, and 28th. Is there any corrections or additions to any of those? Otherwise, they're going to ask for a motion to approve them all at one time.
So moved.
Okay. Any second?
I second it.
All in favor, say it.
Wait, Tom, I'm sorry. I do have a question.
Okay, we got any questions?
I'm sorry. In that, in the 213, the February 13th meeting minutes, it talks about this, the CCMG bidding process. It says that the bids are going to be opened and awarded at the 20th meeting. They're going to be opened tonight and awarded at the 20th meeting. So that's a correction.
Okay.
The bids are in. I believe Tim's got, have you got two, Tim?
Yep.
All right, he's got the second bid. So we got two bids that are going to get opened tonight. The engineer will review them and then we'll make a recommendation to us and then we'll award them on that special meeting on the 20th of March. So that's a correction to those meeting minutes.
Okay, with those corrections, any other corrections or additions? We have a motion and a second to approve as amended. Is Bob on Zoom?
No, not yet.
I'll motion it. Okay.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you. First Committee reports with Police Department Commission and Town Administrator Chief.
One second. It's not popping up yet. Good evening, everyone. For the month of February, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 230 calls for service when compared to 132 calls for service in the previous year for an increase in 92 calls for service. During the month of February, 18 incident reports were documented. A total of 12 individuals were arrested. One felony arrest for felony operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated with a prior conviction. 11 misdemeanor arrests were made for six individuals that were arrested for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. A total of six misdemeanor arrests for traffic-related offenses. And for the month of February, overall, the staff were very active. We would like to highlight two cases on February 15th in the town of Michiana Shores. Deputy Mitchell Seitz did an exceptional job administering Narcan to an individual who was in an overdose state from fentanyl. He was able to bring the individual back to a state of consciousness and then was assisted by emergency medical technicians. In addition to that, we had a incident on February 26th. Again, Deputy Mitchell Seitz, while on routine patrol in the area of Mount Clare and Moore Road, observed a truck at approximately 1:09 a.m. ahead of him that was stopping in traffic, was acting very suspicious. As he continued south on Moore Road, the driver of the vehicle fired several gunshots from the truck. The individual continued a short distance further in front of Notre Dame School, fired a couple more shots from the driver's side of the truck. Deputy Seitz then engaged in a vehicle pursuit with the vehicle. The vehicle rolled over at the intersection of 12 and State Road 212. The driver fled the vehicle, was not arrested that night. However, a handgun was recovered from the truck. Shell casings were recovered off of Moore Road, and we are currently investigating that. We have some witness testimony and more than likely will be filing for an arrest warrant for the individual responsible for that particular incident. The Police Commission will meet in April. We had not met in February. In reference to Town Administrator's side, golf cart registration is now open. We have changed the golf cart registration. It is now a two-year permit. So come in, pay the $100 for the registration. Previously, it was $50 a year. Now it is $100, but that is good for 2023 and 2024. Our new welcome signs for the town have arrived. The Public Works team will be installing those this week, so you'll see them at the four entry points of the town. And we'll be working with the Beach Garden Club to do some landscaping around those in the very near future when the weather begins to improve. And then also, the Public Works team has been working on filling the potholes and addressing the equipment for spring cleanup. Aside from that, everything is well. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I think we're going to change the agenda a little bit and we're going to open the bids for the CCMG bids. Gentlemen from Haas.
Okay, we have two bids, and I will open them, and then I will give them to Sam from Okay, the first one is from Milestone Contractors North, Inc. I'm just going to read all this. No, I'm kidding. I don't know how much. I've never looked at bids like this, I'm sorry, but it appears that this one is...
There's a spreadsheet tab somewhere. It had a couple of numbers on it. Two bottom numbers.
Okay, okay, okay. With a tab, with that.
Yeah. There should be a toll with some...
Toll case, for the Haas bid, there's times.
Yeah, base bid, and then there should be a...
There's a signature page.
Two bottom numbers.
Maybe it's just that, maybe it was that. Is it possible, it's that?
Yeah, let's just use that. If you find a copy.
Can you find it on that one?
Oh, it's the same company?
No, that's a good one. All right, okay. So we think that, we think the price of the first one is $278,905.95, and that again is from Milestone Contractors North.
Can you say that number?
What was that first number?
Okay. And that was from who?
Milestone.
Okay. Is that one word?
Yes, it is. All right. And the second is from Reith Riley.
Reeve Riley.
Sorry, Reeve Riley, and that one is for $313,167.05.
And those are, you just read that line, that it's a base bid.
Total cost of base bid items from Reeve Riley, $313,167.05.
You made the other numbers tonight, right? I mean, that's essentially the number.
Okay. All right, so I'll leave them up here for Sam from Haas to evaluate, and then, as John Coker said, we'll render a decision on the 20th.
Correct. Essentially, the engineer will review the bids for accuracy and then get back to us, and then we will, you know, award on, award or not award on the 20th.
Okay.
So you'll have to get a copy to the engineer then. Sam's here tonight if you want to give him, you've got multiple copies there. If you want to give him one, he can take them with him, I believe, as Chris says. Yeah, so if Sam wants to go, you could come get the two bids and bug out of here if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Hey, Tom?
Fire Department report.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. For the year-to-date, January, February, we've responded to a total of 21 calls as opposed to 23 a year ago. For the month of February, we responded to 10 calls. Three of those were fire calls, seven of those were medical calls. On the fire front, our average turnout personnel is eight members. On the medical front, we average five numbers. Our response time of fire calls is 4.4 minutes, and our response time on medical calls is 4.3 minutes. A couple of things to point out, I'm actually dressed because we're doing house training right now. We had a resident who is demolishing a house over the next week or so, so we've had four training sessions at this house, and we're doing one as we speak where we have the opportunity to go in and simulate fire. We don't actually light the house on fire, but we do cosmetic smoke and we're able to go do real-life scenarios. So we're in the process of doing one right now, so I'll be heading back out there. But it's really great if there's other folks in the neighborhood that are thinking of tearing down a house. We would love to take advantage of the house as a training prop. We've been able to do this quite a bit over the years, and it's the best training we can get. So I know, Mark, Chief, we've worked with you on the Suburban. So anywhere, anyone who's driving through the parking lot tonight, you'll see a red Suburban. That doesn't look like our old rescue vehicle any longer. One of our members, Brian Wright, spent a lot of hours getting that decommissioned and ready to go. It looks like a great, great car ready to be bid. I think, Mark, you've started the process.
Correct, it is on the agenda tonight for council approval.
Perfect. All right, I think another thing on the agenda is the 5K run, and the Fire Department will participate in sponsoring that. Fire Commission met last week. John, you've got a report for that?
Yeah, essentially, what we did was we discussed in somewhat a detailed manner the public safety building status, some of the drawings, were the progress we made on the design-build concept side of that effort, and a little bit about the financing. We also discussed the rescue vehicle that's been put in service, which I think you already mentioned. So what we do have to announce is that we're changing the meeting dates for the Fire Commission from the schedule that was on the website to the first Thursday of the month. We're going to follow up after the Fire Commission meeting at 5 o'clock with the Fire Commission meetings from this date forward, so it'll be the...
Police Commission.
What did I say?
Fire. And the HR is first, and then you've got...
So we're going to try to knock out two meetings in one day. So the Police Commission will meet at 4:00 and we'll meet at 5:00. So that will be a change in the schedule. It'll be corrected on the website.
Tom, I have a question. I heard on the radio that volunteer fire departments in La Porte County got $10,000 each, did we?
My understanding is we are getting $10,000. I don't know if it's been received yet.
Okay, that was part of a longer-term local income tax credit that was given just to fire departments.
I think before they passed that local income tax, they realized that departments needed some help, and they decided to do it. I don't know if it's...
We have not received it yet.
We have not received it yet.
Okay, they had it on the radio. I just thought maybe in the future, because anytime the police get a contribution, even though you're the volunteer fireman, it might be nice, because I do get questions from residents, you know, how much do we get, or what kind of funds do they...
That's been discussed in our Fire Commission meetings, the monies that are coming in from the county. That money should get delivered directly to the town, I believe.
Yeah, we'll find out where it's going.
This is the first time. We haven't seen it yet. This is the first time.
No, thank you.
Have you seen it, Tim, from the county?
No. We've got lots of expenses we can put into it.
Yes.
Hey, Tom, I have a quick question, maybe you can comment on it. But I've heard that when you donate your house to be used as a test burn-down thing, there's a potential tax write-off situation.
Yeah, there is. I mean, what I've done in the past with some homeowners is I will calculate the hours, the number of people that have spent time there, and we'll give them a letter. I'll write a letter back to the homeowner and say, you know, thank you for your donation. You've, you know, we spent 40 hours at your house, and, you know, we'll put a dollar figure on it, and they can use that as a tax deduction.
That's great.
It's a great, it's a great, yeah, it's great for the community, but it also helps you do financially as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Admiral speaking out of turn, but you leave usually, right?
I do, I have a lecture.
There's been comments about the aging of the volunteer...
You might, because I can't... No, it's not a turn, but I know... There have been comments, I'm sorry, Anita Remigis, 2300 Flormont, I apologize for being out of turn, but I know you leave. There have been, there was a recent comment about the aging of the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department. And could you, and it's putting you on the spot, but can you speak for two minutes to the background of some of the fire department, your training, how rigorous it is, just to let people know that we're not an old-aging department? Thank you.
Happy to provide you some background, you know, unprepared, I don't have the remarks for you, but, you know, our fire department goes through all of the training that regular fire departments go through. So everyone in our fire department goes through, we call them a mandatory training, which is, you know, no one's allowed on a fire scene until you've done these state-certified mandatory training. That then leads to what we call firefighter one and firefighter two, which is every professional firefighter takes. Takes a little bit longer, a lot longer for volunteer fire organizations to attain those statuses, because we all have full-time jobs and we do training when we can. We train every Monday night, so every Monday night, you'll see our fire trucks out doing something in the community somewhere around. Our community is 27, I want to say 27 active members today, and it crosses multiple age groups. I don't have the exact ages, but, you know, we're representative of fire departments across the country. I've done some research across, you know, this all career and volunteer fire departments, and we're, we cross all the different age stretch lines. It's difficult to recruit firefighters, and we continue to recruit every day that we can. And so if any of you have, you know, friends that want to be part of the fire department, we'd love to talk to you and, you know, help you serve a community, because, you know, we're looking for people, you know, at all ages. And we have a, we have a very healthy mix from ages, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, and beyond. We take the experience, and that covers our medical people as well as our fire people. So we're doing everything. Again, we, you know, honestly, we have a, we have a very healthy roster on our fire department. If you look at other fire departments across the county, across the country, we're very blessed to have that many people on our fire department and giving the amount of hours that we do. So, you know, we're always looking for people that want to join. It is a commitment, though. It's a very big commitment. It's not just you show up at the fire department every Monday night. I carry a pager on my hip, it runs 24/7, and, you know, it goes off, you know, at the most inopportune times. So, you know, we're here to serve, and serve and protect, and we appreciate all your, you know, we appreciate your concern, and, you know, know that we take this very seriously. This is a life and death type of thing. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm a little worried, but I do have a question, so I just brought it up. Thank you very much for doing that.
No, you need to come up here, because the recording people can't...
Come on up to my microphone.
Sure. And men and women, too.
And yes, we have men and women on our department, and so I got...
We do. I just wanted, is there a residency requirement or a geographic radius that your firefighter have to be living within in order to be able to dispatch...
That's a great question.
Thank you.
Just, you need to give your name, just, she needs to give her name and address.
Hi, you'll be seeing me again, public comment. I am Nola Gertner, 2302 Fairway Drive. Thank you.
No, there is not a residency requirement to join the fire department. However, we ask that you are close by. You know, we have, you know, we'd like to have all of our fire department living in Long Beach. That's not a luxury. You know, we try to recruit, you know, many younger folks into our fire department that can't afford a house in Long Beach. We do recruit outside of, outside of, you know, in Michigan City, Potawatomi Park, and we try to get as many people as we can. We have some folks that can, you know, be more responsive during daytime, others, you know, work during the evening. So, you know, it's a constant balance trying to maintain a fire department. But we, again, we are very blessed by the amount, number of people that we have in our fire department today.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Any comments, John?
No, the only, the only other comment I would make was we're blessed with a couple of people that came over from Chicago. They were part-time residents and turned into full-time residents, and they're very, very capable people. One was on the Chicago Fire Department, and one was on Suburban Departments, and they're just top-notch people. The other thing I would make a comment about, Tom's comment relative to having that pager on his side, and Tom's neighbor made this point at that December 27th meeting, and that is this, you know, your whole, your whole family commits to this. You know, at 3:00 in the morning, you're gone. Thanksgiving afternoon, something happens, you're gone. So everybody's family commits to this. So it's, it's quite a, it's quite an undertaking, and I'm very, it's just like Tom, I'm extremely proud of the cross-section of individuals we have, both age-wise and experience-wise. We're a very capable department, very, very well-trained department, and we stack up against any paid or volunteer department in the county as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, and just the last comment I have, if anybody ever has questions, we'd be happy to sponsor you to come visit the fire station and talk with us. So we'd love to open the doors and help you understand more.
I've got a question for you.
Oh, wait, you got, oh, you got a turn.
Just turn it off, turn it back on.
Okay, I'll turn it back on.
Hold it, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Bob Boyce, 2926 Lake Shore Drive. I'm just wondering, you have qualifications for all your men, correct?
People.
Qualifications, okay. Do you provide those qualifications along with the names of your people to the town?
The town has, if they want them, we have them all, but we can't, we carry out certificates of people.
I would think that the town should have them.
Towns never asked for them, Bob. If they want them, they'll ask.
Don't, I am not talking to you, I'm talking to him.
I beg your pardon, you're in a public meeting, you're talking to all of us.
Okay, well, don't get excited, John.
What else do you have there, sir?
That's about it.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Tom. Mary Lou?
Public Works met on February 27th. It was just a normal meeting. We talked about the CCMG, we talked about the Stop 17 drainage project, we talked about alleys, repairs, and paving, which wouldn't be covered by the CCMG, so we will do those as we have the money for them. And probably the first one, they, which I didn't even know there was a alley, was by, on Stop 23 by Hazel Time. So we didn't have any new business. We meet again on, we're always on the fourth Monday of the month, so March 27th.
Any questions? Joey? Park Board?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, we're met on February 28th. Park Board is going to take the lead on the ADA stop project. We'll be meeting with Jeff from Global Engineering this Wednesday to resurrect the 2019 plan for an ADA stop of 15, and we will also be adding emergency vehicle access to the project. We're working for, we're looking for existing surveys for Stop 29 and Stop 19. If the clerk's office is aware of any, please let us know, or anyone else for that matter. Otherwise, we'll order new ones. We're scoping out some stop work, and we have some known encroachments at both those stops. The staff is working with the Michigan City Parks Department to coordinate a date for beach cleanup. Special mulch will be replenished at the playground. Park is being scheduled for Saturday, July 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00. We've contracted with Pizzo and Associates to remove the Frank White and 24. The homeowner to the east of Stop 19 is participating financially, has some li on their property. This will be an ongoing project spanning March through August with three visits from the company. The summer camp dates are technically scheduled for 6/19 through 8/4. We have an opportunity to offer volleyball. This wouldn't really be part of the summer park program. It's run through BP Volleyball by Ross Wallin, and he runs some volleyball camps in Michigan City, he runs volleyball camps all over the place, actually. So it would be basically, then, the Park Board plans on setting up a permanent volleyball court in the park over there, sort by the baseball field. And they would be utilizing that, they really do their own advertising, they hire their own staff, they would pay us a certain percentage of the money that they, I think 30%, but don't quote me on that. Our question really is, is there, is there a liability we should know about, and maybe, Chris, you have that answer? Is this something that we can, that we can allow? Or is the town going to be somehow adversely liable for something like this?
With the camp specifically? With the camp specifically, Joy?
Yes.
Yes, so usually, usually they'll have a waiver, and if they want to send over, we can just add some language that includes the town and representatives, et cetera. So it's something I think you can easily work around. The town potentially could have liability. I mean, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, you can never ultimately guarantee nobody's going to name, a party's not going to name the town regardless, but we can do as much as we can in terms of inclusion of language. So if you just want to get a copy, if you're inclined to do that, get a copy of their waiver, and we can work together to add the language we need to. Not a big, not a big undertaking.
Okay, we'll move forward with that, and once we get that in place, then we'll come back to the council for approval for the whole project. And the last thing we had was, the Parks Department would like to request a public hearing to seek approval to access monies from the Park Board reserves to supplement our 2023 budget.
Can I, can I add to that? Yeah, Joy, I saw that question come, I was out of the office, I saw that come, and there wasn't enough time to be able to do it before this, because it has to be advertised for at least 10 days. So you certainly could do it at the next meeting if you were inclined to set a public hearing on that additional appropriation, I believe is what she's referring to.
Yes, that would be great if whoever needs to start that process and I need to do something.
That $50,000, is that what we're talking about, Joy? I think it was 70, 77, wasn't it, Joy? 77,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Joy, Deanna's on taking minutes. Do you want her to post that?
That would be great, if she could, yeah.
Okay, I'm sure she will, I'm sure she heard me.
Yeah, and she can get ahold of me if she needs help with the language.
When would we have their meeting?
Just do it at the next public, at the next year, or a meeting, unless there's a special meeting. But there's at least 10 days and it needs to be published, so unless there's an urgent meeting, you do it before your next regular meeting, it'll be next month.
Okay.
No, not the urgent.
Okay.
Okay, Community Center, Joy?
Joy, if I, Joy, I'm sorry, Joy, one second. If we could go back to the EVP volleyball camp for the summer, I know the Park Board is in support thus far. We're working on the certificates of liability, individual certificates of liability from the camp participants. I would like to ask the council for a vote of a motion for support for this camp, to allow the camp to occur as long as the Park Board agrees that everything's in place with the pending contracts and that, so this way we don't have to come back to the council. So...
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I second, I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Community Center will not be meeting until next Monday, so there's no report to some...
Okay. Hey, Joy, I have a quick question. You mentioned stop surveys. Can you say what stops again? I, I'll look, but I need to know the numbers.
Sure, 19 and 29.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joy, is the survey, so you know what the residents want?
Land.
Oh, oh, wait, oh, wait on, okay.
Or not.
Okay.
Good budget and finance, Tim?
Good evening. Budget and finance met on March 8th, and we reviewed the 2023 budget. Monthly and year-end financial reports were reviewed that we plan to present to the Town Council. We discussed cash and balance positions in each of our funds. We looked at our revenue and expenses year-to-date, which are about on target. Very into budget, that same thing, mostly on target. We had a few discrep, a few items in some of the payroll areas were out of whack, but that'll be an allocation later in the year. Nothing substantial, though. Carl Sander was on, and he did the quarterly and mid-year financial reviews. We talked about cash management with our bank account again, yet to be resolved, but we're, we're close. And there were some public comments about different numbers that we've thrown around as to what interest income we might, we might benefit from as a town. And the interest that we would get is a function of the principal amount that we invest and the term that we invested for and the rates that we are able to obtain. So the estimates of, you know, $50,000, $90,000 per year, they're, they're estimates because we haven't decided on how much we're going to allocate toward each investment vehicle, if anything. And when we do decide, and when the rates, you know, when we know what rate we're going to receive, though, we'll be able to calculate a more accurate estimate as to what return we can expect. We talked about the Lake Shore Drive sewer project, possible engineering expense, pending We talked about the Lake Shore Drive sewer project, possible engineering expense, um, pending lawsuit. Not much to be said on that because it's a pending lawsuit. But, um, 500 grand-ish is, uh, at play there. And hopefully, we will not have to pay that, but we'll see. Um, discussed CCMG and the capital plan. Um, Public Works, we talked about, uh, Lake Shore Drive water improvements. Um, the Stop 17 and 18 drainage, uh, program with final engineering estimates coming from Haas. Um, we're still looking for Stop 29, uh, Woodruff invoices. Uh, but we, uh, we discussed fire truck financing a little bit, but I don't think we decided on anything. And again, we can't decide on things at that meeting anyway. But we, um, I think we tabled most of the fire truck financing discussions for a later date. Um, Budget Working Group meeting, we scheduled that. Park Board funding and go-bond reconciliation, we talked about that. As Joy touched on, uh, we'll have a special meeting to address support Park Board's funding needs. Um, we have a voucher system that we're, we're implementing that will help reduce any errors, um, that come from my office and the like. Um, 2024 budget process, we're looking at that. We would like to, you know, streamline that a little bit. 2023 was a little, little bumpy for everybody, mainly because we're all new at doing it. But hopefully, 2024 is a better time to do it. Um, today, I have with me the Civic contract that we can, that I signed but have not sent to put us on the cloud with Civic. I think we all decided that that's a good thing. Um, we talked about cash and asset accounting for town and water. Currently, they're separate. There's proposals to put them together. There's some that are against that. We didn't, uh, um, again, we can't decide things on that meeting anyway. But we didn't come to any decision as to what to do with those two amounts. It's sort of like running two businesses at the same time. It makes it a little harder, but there are reasons to keep it apart. One is that, that water is a utility and the State Department of Accounting wants it to be separate. However, we don't have a water generating plant any longer. So there's a debate as to whether or not we're really a, a utility or are we just a pass-through because we buy water from Michigan City and resell it? So the definition of utility is a little bit clouded. And we, we want to make sure that if we're not a utility, it, it is okay to combine the two accounts. But we don't want to do that without knowing for sure that we're not a utility. Um, and then, uh, we talked about our annual financial report that was made, um, at the last second, thanks to, um, one of the deputies in my office who stepped up in my absence. So, uh, that report is, is, um, been submitted. And there's no penalties or problems with it being late. So that was all we had. Thank you.
Any questions? The Human Resources?
Human Resources did not meet in March, but we did. If you remember last meeting, we were wanting to hire a person and we got that approved. And she was super qualified and got a better offer after she was here three days from the United Way of Northwest Indiana in Valparaiso. So we have been interviewing. And, uh, thanks to the staff here, we've found a new way to, to find people. Too many, too many people that aren't qualified, but at least we got some input. So we want to, we want to make an offer to a, a young lady. It'll start two weeks from today when Lynn gets back. And we want to offer the same that we were going to offer the other lady. So it'd be $19.95 an hour, which is well within our range. And she is well qualified.
Okay. Any questions?
I need a motion to approve that.
Okay, motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I thought our process was that the Human Resources Committee did the interviewing and then came up with a candidate and then had the department heads interview the candidate. Did that happen yet?
No, because he was out of medical leave.
Okay.
And we have to fill.
Our interviewer already?
Yes.
The department head and he did, yeah.
Oh.
We did today.
Yeah, today.
This is, this is the individual to replace the current Water Department clerk, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. We had the, uh, second interview today. Um, that was conducted by the Chair of the HR Committee. Councilwoman McFadden, myself, and the, um, Water Department Superintendent sat in on the second interview this morning. So, so all, all were in agreement.
Background checked and reference checked.
Any other questions?
Well, my understanding is this person's going to report to the, the town clerk, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And should we not have him involved in the process at all, or?
I mean, I, I was out a few days. I was, right, obviously. But I was back Friday and yesterday, and, well, Friday and Monday. But I, you know, I.
Are you okay with it, Tim?
With not interviewing her?
Mm-hmm. You were gone six days. You never, I, I didn't get any medical certification. I didn't know where you were, because.
I, well, I'm just a phone call away, ma'am, anytime. But I would, I wouldn't mind meeting her. Um, or at least, can you kick me over her resume so I can have a look at that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
If you do that, that'd be great, and then we can discuss.
Yeah. No, and actually, she lives in Long Beach, so she would, I'm sure would be happy to come in and talk to you.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Yeah, since we have two weeks.
So then, can we, uh, vote on this, subject to, uh, Tim seeing her, talking to her?
Ultimately, Tim's approval.
Yeah. So, subject to that, is that okay?
Yes, that'd be perfect.
Is that all right, John?
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
As everybody's having. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
So, Tim, what's your schedule this week?
Uh, anytime, Thursday or Friday, uh, Wednesday afternoon, but all day Thursday and Friday.
Okay, Thursday, Friday, what time?
You, let me know. I'm here all day.
Well, I mean, in case, like, 10?
10.
10?
Yeah.
I'll get her back in. She's very nice.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tree Board, Ellen?
Hi, I'm trying to say my name and.
Yes.
Well, my name is Ellen Lynch. I live 2225 Lake Shore Drive. I think I've done most of this via email today with, uh, the Chief and Chris and anyone else that was on the email that were still working on our ordinance. We found some inaccuracies and some things, some language that needs to be written correctly and that we're going to address all that. And in the next meeting, we should be able to get all that ironed out and then get it back to you so it could be approved and signed. And then from there, we'll go on with the things that we want to do as a Tree Board, with education and, and anything else that we think, seem to think would help the board. And we, I would like to make a point of saying that we would definitely, the board is, uh, is to work in partnership with, uh, Tom and that, you know, as a partner. And hopefully, we can get more done, so.
Ellen, thank you for volunteering, taking the chairman's job. I mean that.
You say that to me every time you speak.
Well, we, we.
Mr. Coker.
Okay, that's it then, all right?
Mr. Coker, can, can I just add that if, to help them out, if there's any, uh, council comments that maybe send or include both of us in so that, as they're going to present another draft in a red line version?
And I did notice on one of the emails that Tom is on it. We'll make sure that he is on it, too. And I don't know if, if the Parks Board should be on it to see what we're doing.
Well, Janice is on the Tree Board. So Janice is on the Park Board, right? Or she's the?
No, 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 she's not. But would it be a good idea to include the Park Board? Because they deal with trees and the ordinance is about trees and everything about trees. So what, yeah, we'll make sure that they're all included on that, too. And I think all of you, you include everybody on yours, so I'll make sure I include the whole board. I'm going to make a little this, Cube Board.
We can, oh, I can get you that, Liz.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Building Commission, BZA Advisory Plan Commission, I don't think Bob's here.
No.
He is not. The only thing I would add is that the Building Commission meets a week from this Friday, March 24th, 1:00 p.m. in this room.
And I can add one other. There was only one petition that was considered at the BZA meeting last month, which was a standard development variance of a construction of a shed for the Duffy property, which was approved. And then there was no Advisory Plan Commission meeting.
Right.
Okay. And, yeah, yeah, and there is no advisory plan.
BZA meeting this month because there were no petitions.
Oh, oh, good.
Okay, the Building Permit Revenue Report, Tim?
Building, hello. Building Per, Building Permit Revenue Report for February 2023. 17 permits were issued totaling $1,298,017 with revenue of $13,983. Six electric permits issued, uh, were issued totaling $776. Legal expenses paid in February, uh, to Brasey, Nelson, and James were $5,437.50. Lobbyist fees totaling $6,250 were paid to the courting group. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
I second it.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close.
Thank you. Coker, before you continue, I noticed, looking at the agenda, I sent a message earlier. I think Deanna's working remotely, or this evening. But I would, uh, advise you, if you're inclined to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add the, uh, a new business. You have the public hearing, which was properly advertised, considering for the additional appropriation. But adding a line item after that for consideration of the resolution. You're, you're entitled to do that. It's just not on the agenda so that it's made part of the agenda. That resolution has been circulated. It's part of that public hearing. It's the action you would take if you were inclined after the public hearing. It's just not part of the written agenda.
Yeah, this is Deanna. Just wanted to make sure. I was going to say, that came in on Saturday and so those agendas were already prepared. But I did change it for the main one in the folder that Tim has. And it is, um, I think it's ready to be heard, like you said, right after the public hearing.
And so for clarity, are those the ones that are printed as well? I know, okay, so, so we're good there. The ones that you have may not reflect that, so just want to make sure that's reflected.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, that's added. Unfinished business, committee board appointments.
All right, so, um, as it relates to that, under that topic, we'll talk about term limits, uh, which we approved, um, in 2022. Um, I have distributed a schedule of our 13 standing committees, commissions, and boards with all of the current members, uh, with their term limits. Um, and just in review, and we all know this, I think, but the term limits are two consecutive four-year terms for a total of eight years. Um, if a term expires and there isn't a, a replacement for that individual coming off, then we would extend that individual's participation in committee until a suitable replacement is found. Um, there are three classes based on tenure, A, B, and C, uh, based on how long someone's been on it versus a brand-new member. All of these went into effect on January 1st, 2023. Uh, we have our first, second term expirations occurring in three and a half years at the end of '26, 12/31/26. Um, and then the next group will come, um, on December 31st, '28, and December 31st, uh, 2030. The one outlier in the group is Public Works. Uh, is formed as a brand-new committee with all new members and starting at the same time. So all of them will be, um, their terms will be, um, good through 12/31/30 or eight years. Um, and we've got, um, a few items on there that I've got TBD to be determined. So if anybody has input on the ones that I've put on there, there are approximately, I think, six individuals that we need to fine-tune. But other than that, um, I believe we're ready to go with that. So we've got a period of time before this becomes a, a reality in terms of replacing individuals. Again, I'll, as I mentioned, three and a half years. Um, and so we have time to begin to plan and work towards that process. Um, open to any questions?
I think we got one mistaken at Public Works. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mary Lou, you might know. I thought Dan Fines, I thought I was taking it, so I think, I think I'm on the Public Works.
Thanks, John. So we did not replace that individual?
Well, I think, I think I was on there. And then when we juggled this whole thing, we came up with seven altogether. But I think I was one of them, and I think Dan begged off.
That's correct.
So we're down to six?
No, no. So seven, I take Dan's place and you're?
Oh, I see. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Only thing on Tree Board, D O V I E, on the last page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, question?
Mr. Chair? Yes?
Just a housekeeping issue. Um, in January of every year, the council commonly will announce the appointments to the various boards and commissions. We have yet to do that this year. So I don't know if you would want to entertain that we keep the current, um, positions as is on the boards and commissions, or maybe we'll get some advice, Chris, how to proceed on that. But we haven't, um, had a motion and a vote on that as of yet for this year.
That's correct.
So.
Well, and the issue also is which of those, um, positions are yearly, annual? Some of the, the ordinances say, uh, for the length of the term of the council.
Presidential, some say.
Some say presidential. So if you want to take a general vote of leaving everybody, I, I'm not aware, and Dr. Lemay is not part of this meeting tonight. Uh, I don't think there's any openings that need to be filled on the ones that tend to have longer terms. For instance, the APC, the BZA. So I think that you're okay with reaffirming the current appointments for the calendar year. That would be appropriate. But I, I would encourage you, as you start to, this, uh, Mr. John Stone's ordinance and as it starts to get put into practice, we probably need to review those ordinances to make sure that everything reconciles with terms going forward.
Got it.
So just a general motion to reaffirm the appointments for the calendar year 2023 would be approved.
Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second it.
Any other questions? John? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, draft of ordinance pertaining to vacant lots.
Um, we haven't finished that yet, so we'll, Chris and I are going to work on it along with Lynn.
Table, table that for the.
Please, yeah. Right?
Sure.
The SBOA suggested auto, auto, auto update.
I think that's a moot point, that the annual report went in. I think that was sufficient to our needs if we.
Yeah, we, there was, there was a lot of discussion around that. And the, the, uh, consequences of it not going in were horrific, but it went in. And, you know, like many things in my world here, if things don't happen the way they're supposed to, there are consequences. So I, I, I take this serious. I have a, a very, um, able staff that I'm lucky to have. And, and, uh, some would say they do all the work. But, you know, the case is that the report was submitted. We're aware of the consequences of what would happen if it didn't get submitted, but it was submitted. So I guess it is moot. Uh, and, and another note, the SBOA will not come and conduct random interviews, or random, um, audits. That, they will, they'll come and audit when they want to audit it. But we can't request an audit from them. We can't hire an outside firm to come and audit, um, us. We do, my office does talk to the SBA, SBOA pretty frequently. I have a note here from, um, I won't bore you with the details, but from Mitch Wilson, who's the Government Technical Assistance and Compliance Director, clarifying a few concerns I had, which I don't think we need to get into tonight. But we're in contact with those guys. And, uh, and I met a few of them at the, um, Blue Chip Casino. They had a, um, Clerk Treasurer, um, uh, meeting for all the Clerk Treasurers from Indiana. And I had a, um, a good conversation with several of them back then. It's good to have a face to, a name to the face. But, um, they're not too concerned with what's going on in, in our world. In fact, I, I think they seem relatively happy. And again, I'll credit the great staff that I have. And, and, um, I, I think we're okay. So it's, I'm sure there'll be public comments on that, but, right.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, next item, Civic Systems Contract. We've got that.
So we, we talked about, um, going to the cloud with Civic. And, um, and we, we've been back and forth with it. It's a, it's a pretty, um, uh, minor increase in our expenses. It would be an upfront investment of $2,500 with a monthly hosting fee for $480. And, um, that would allow up to four people to be on Civic at the same time. Currently, it's only three. So if another person that wants to be on in my, in my department, they can't or they have to wait, which doesn't happen too frequently. But when it does, when we're all busy and need to be on it, it's a, it's a problem. Um, the, the fact that it would be on the cloud would, would make things a bit easier. It would make it easier for, um, Sender to take a look at our Civic activities. And it would make it a little easier to test a few changes when they come out before we actually implement them. So the, I think the, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, everybody was in agreement that it was, um, a worthy investment. And, and prior to this, um, I think the Town Council approved a $10,000 expense to be used towards Civic improvements, and this would fall within that amount.
Could you say those numbers again? How, was it, how much was it?
$2,500 upfront.
Okay.
And then $480 per month for a monthly hosting fee.
Forever?
For, uh, 36 months.
Okay.
And Mr. Coker, I was asked to review the contract. I've reviewed it. It's standard and it's in form for you to. It's standard and it's in form for you to sign if approved by the council. If you're inclined to approve it, I would suggest that you authorize Mr. Coker as the acting chairperson, vice president, to sign on behalf of the council.
Any?
So that's a lot, that's a lot more than we budgeted. If it's 480 times 36 months, that's 17, 280 plus the 2,500. That's almost twice as much.
Well.
Divided by three.
That's, that's for three years though, Mary, if you do it that way.
Yeah, I think we talked about a one-time investment of 10 grand to upgrade the whole thing. And they came back and said it's 2,500 bucks and then 480 a month for 36 months. Maybe we can do it for a year rather than 36 months?
No, I think it said they, they wanted a three-year contract.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, the other thing that this thing does is, you know, we, we keep falling behind on these updates. This means we will never have that issue again. They'll, they'll always update the software. We won't be three patches behind like we've, three or four patches behind like we found ourselves at the beginning of this year. So the software will always be updated and all the records will be on the cloud. So I think it's a very productive way of cleaning up our accounting side. I think the budget and finance committee was wholly in favor of it. And Mary Lou, if, if the money's a problem, I think we'll just revisit it. We can authorize this expenditure tonight. I would have moved two things. One would be that we'd accept John Coker's signature and Loua Bob's, Bob Lemay's signature this evening to sign the contract. That's my first motion. My second motion is that we approve this expenditure at the rates that Tim just said, which was a $2,500 one time and 480 a month for 36 months.
Okay, you've heard John's motion, two motions. Do I hear a second?
Do you say second twice?
Just do one at a time.
Second for both.
Okay. First motion to allow me to sign the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second motion to go ahead with the contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So awkward, but.
You'll let this on.
Yeah. Okay. Stop 17 and 18 Stormwater Infrastructure Project update, the chief or who?
John. Well, essentially, you know, we've been working on this project for multiple years, at least three that I'm aware of. And actually, if you go back to the history of this area in terms of drainage, it's been going on for almost a decade now. There's a homeowner that's down there. His house was built very low in the surrounding ground. It's actually a drainage area for much of Moon Valley, believe it or not. It just happens to be a sump. The groundwater goes through there. So we've had, it's been inadequately served from a stormwater perspective for many, many years. We offered one alternative to that homeowner. The, the line that currently takes stormwater down to the lake in that area at Stop 17 is on his private property and is inadequate. And we offered to replace it, but that would have required taking down all the big trees on his property. So he did not want us to do that. Subsequent to that, then we sat down with the engineer and came up with a couple of alternatives. And we now have some bid numbers for that and we reviewed that with the budget and finance guys. So that project now is in final design. We authorized that last meeting, I believe. So the project is in final design. We'll have some final design numbers. The range is variable because of the current supply chain issues, but we'll have some more definitive numbers once the final design is complete. We'll bring that back to you. So this is more informational. Now, there was some concern on Tim's part because he lives right at Stop 18. The current design includes some new structures and a new flu, flume, I should say, going down 18. We currently run some stormwater down there. We'd like to do that and some additional stormwater down there. We hope that the structures and the new pipe will be, will enable it to only require overflow in the event of a significant rain event, you know, like a hundred-year storm. So it should improve the situation at 18, actually. But in, in terms of the Stop 17 area, it will correct that. So that's really where we're at. And somebody mentioned having a, a public information session. We're more than happy to do that. I think once we get the final engineering completed, we'll do that. We can schedule a meeting and everybody can be aware of what's going on. Again, this will be funded through the Stormwater Fund, which I think right now, after we got, one of the reasons we were kind of holding off on finalizing it was we didn't have the year-end numbers for 2022. We now have those numbers and we're comfortable, I think, that we can cover this with the Stormwater Funds in hand. So that's my summation. Mark, if you have anything?
No, correct. We had asked for the current funds available in that account and then the projected, projected revenue for the remainder of this year. And then once we have those totals and have a better idea on the preliminary study that Haas is doing, we'll be ready for a, a public meeting and then a vote by the council thereafter.
Okay, it's moving along. It's been a issue for quite some time, so it's good we're getting some progress. Not yet.
And, and I'll just add this, past month in February, obviously, we had quite a bit of rain for a couple of days there. Tom Dolph and myself were surveying that area. And obviously, we have quite a bit of standing water on Lake Shore Drive in that area that we're discussing. And this is the reason why we want to move forward with this. In addition to that, eventually, we need to pave Lake Shore Drive in the future. And it would be who of us to get the stormwater addressed prior to paving Lake Shore Drive? And this would be one of the stormwater projects as we move forward.
Okay, update on Stop 19?
It's actually, I think that's 29, isn't it?
It is. It's Stop 29. I spoke to Bruce at Woodruff this afternoon. Bruce assured me that we will have their invoice for our April meeting. He's been shorthanded this last month. I had communicated with him last week in hopes of having it for tonight, but he had reached out to me earlier today and said that we will have it for our April meeting.
Okay, thank you. New business, Notre Dame 5K Run. I think Tom alluded to that.
Correct, this is an annual event. This will be year three this year. The event will be held on Saturday, March 25th. The race will kick off at 8:00 AM from Notre Dame School on Moore Road. The Long Beach Fire Department, Long Beach Police Department will be assisting. I will be participating in a Zoom meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM to get the final logistics on the race. In previous years, there was no issue. It's well-attended by the residents of Long Beach. And I would ask that the council make the motion to approve the race once again this year for March 25th, 8:00 AM with minimal street closures.
I make that motion to approve the race?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a quick comment, you know, the police department and the fire department help this cause. We all are out there with vehicles and manpower the day of the race to make sure that it's safe for everybody that's running. We man street corners and the police drop down the whole route so that it stays safe for those individuals. So it's a nice PR for all of us as well.
And every year, the event has grown in number, so it's great to see the number of participants every year.
Okay, next item is Two Penguin Production Company wants to lease some space at the community center for a movie.
In recent weeks, we were approached by Two Penguin Productions. In fact, Kate is here with us tonight. She can answer some questions. Kate, you may want to come up to the microphone. I'll give a brief introduction. So I met with Courtney and Kate last week. We had discussed the opportunity for them to rent space at our community center. And this will be done, be done in the month of May. They're asking for a minimum of three to five days to utilize Room 12 and also the atrium room at the community center. I have reached out to the chair of the community center board and that individual is in favor of us allowing this to occur. I've also touched base with Sarah from the park department to make sure that we don't overlap with anything to do with our summer activities. So the proposal that we have is for them to have space for three to five days to film a short film, which I'll allow Kate to kind of go into the brief details of that. In exchange for the rental space, Two Penguin Productions would donate to the town of Long Beach $2,000. That could be used at our community center to continue some of the ongoing improvements that we're making at the center. And this time, I'd like to introduce Kate and allow her to explain a little bit.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. Um, yeah, we are looking to film a very short indie film, probably somewhere between eight and 20 minutes. It is kind of like a spooky sort of movie, but as our proposal states, there's no gore or any violence within the movie. And we would absolutely return the community center back completely to how it was. We, Two Penguins Production Company, which I'm not a member of, but which I am working with on this project, has extensive experience working with clients such as The New York Times and Twitter. And my partner Courtney is actually working with Food Network right now, so that's why she's not here with me today. But they're professionals and we're looking forward and hopeful that we can film some scenes within the community center. Happy to answer any questions as well to the best of my abilities.
Anybody have any questions?
It's not about the council, is it?
It's only about you. No, it is, uh, it's not about anyone. Not about the council and it would not be about, that'll be the sequel. Yeah, it, um, there will not be any Long Beach connection to the movie or, or any sort of community center connection as well. It would just be a generic sort of space to film the film.
Okay.
I assume you're licensed and bonded and insured and all that stuff?
Yep, and we're happy to provide all evidence of that. That would be coming from my co-producer with Two Penguins.
Right.
Yeah, just give that information in order.
We, definitely.
Any other questions? Motion to approve the production?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a Save the Dunes update. Stockwell Woods Nature Preserve. Who's got that?
I do. And Dr. Lemay had asked in his absence if I could read this letter into the record tonight, so it'll take me just a few minutes. We have an update from Save the Dunes in reference to the Stockwell Woods Nature Preserve. As you may know, in December of 2021, the town of Long Beach graciously donated three parcels of untouched dune land ecosystems to Save the Dunes, adjacent to our Stockwell Woods Nature Preserve. These new parcels nearly tripled the size of the preserve, which now sits at just under 43 acres. We at Save the Dunes are externally grateful for this gift and are honored that you have entrusted us with the care of this special place. We do not take this responsibility lightly. We would also like to acknowledge that previous stewardship projects at the Stockwell Woods Nature Preserve were carried out in a manner that did not prioritize communication, community engagement and follow-through. These three values are at the core of our work today, and we are committed to doing better and working with the town of Long Beach and its residents to care for Stockwell Woods through transparency and collaboration. To that end, we are thrilled to share that we have secured funding to do some management at the preserve over the next two years. Thanks to the hard work and dedication from a group of Long Beach community volunteers, invasive plants have been treated at Stockwell Woods for many years. However, with the, with a property of this size and the plant species found on it, there is only so much work we can accomplish on our own. That is why we are excited that this year we will be able to hire a contractor to remove invasive species such as bush honeysuckle, oriental bittersweet, multifloral rose and other woody invasives on all 43 acres of the preserve. Retreatment will occur in 2024. In addition, about five acres of remnant, I'm sorry, remnant oak savanna habitat will undergo tree, tree thinning in the coming weeks. Please know that we are being very purposefully, purposeful in how we do this. We are working with a conservation professionals and the Long Beach community volunteers to mark specific trees, only those small amount to be removed by hand for removal. We will be moving the downed trees later this year to line the trails during a volunteer workday. Stay tuned for a date if you're interested in helping out. The reason that this tree trimming is important is that oak savanna ecosystems support incredible biodiversity and are exceedingly rare. Oak savannas are sparsely tree grasslands where fire-resistant oaks stand among prairie plants. They are richly diverse ecosystems that contain plants and animals found in both oak forests and prairies. If neglected, prairie plants disappear as the habitat becomes dominated by trees which shade out the understory. Once covering roughly 50 million acres from Michigan to Nebraska, oak savannas now cover only about 30,000 acres. In the Midwest, it is estimated that less than 0.02% of high-quality oak savanna habitat remains. We have the rare privilege of owning a small piece of this special habitat type that was once so prevalent in our area. We intend to follow the lead of our many partners, such as the Indiana Dunes National Park and Shirley Hines Land Trust in prioritizing the preservation of oak savanna ecosystems whenever possible. This project is only the first step in our long-term commitment to restoring the natural space, enhancing the public's access and enjoyment of the property and learning all that Stockwell Woods has to teach us. Our mission is to protect the dunes for the health and vitality of both the environment and the people who call it their home. We hope you will join us in restoring and enhancing Stockwell Woods Nature Preserve so that our families and those of future generations may know the joys of this special place. Sincerely, Katie Hobgood, Program Director, Save the Dunes Conservation Fund. And this letter will also, it's currently on the town's website for reference. And as we receive additional information from Save the Dunes, we will be posting that to the town's website for transparency to all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyber policy renewal, I think we've already?
So for the last three years, we have had cyber insurance coverage for the town of Long Beach. We now are up for renewal. Actually, our renewal date was a day ago. However, General Insurance has extended that, knowing that tonight's meeting was occurring. Happy to report that our premium for this year is now $2,624. That is roughly 980-some dollars less than last year's policy. So therefore, the policy has come down. And also, there has been an increase in coverage in a few of the coverage lines. The policy has been referred to our IT vendor, K Plus. K Plus has reviewed it and has recommended that the town council proceed with continuing cyber protection for the town.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes, please. And also for signature by Dr. Lemay upon his return.
So moved.
I second it.
Any other comments?
Uh, do we need to have John sign it to keep General Insurance happy?
That'd probably be a good idea. True.
Why don't we move for John?
Yeah.
How long is it extended? Either way, then you'll be covered.
Through the end of the week so we can get him to sign it. Yeah.
So we need two motions?
Yes, well, you said, all right. Second motion to approve it with John Coker's signature.
Here's a second?
I second it.
Okay, second motion to have me sign it. Any other comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
And the first motion to enter into contract or extension? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, chief, next item is the police department with the?
Yes, we are seeking approval by the town council for the moving forward of auctioning off by acceptance of public bid to town vehicles. The first is the 2013 black in color Ford Taurus Police Interceptor. The second vehicle is the red in color 1996 Chevy Suburban that was previously assigned as a rescue vehicle to the Long Beach Fire Department. Both of these vehicles have been replaced with new vehicles in recent months, and we would like to get approval to move forward with the auctioning of these vehicles, opening up the auction bids by sealed bid submitted to the town clerk's office starting tomorrow and then closing the bid process at our April 10th. So that's when we will open the bid. So they have until 7:00 PM on April 10th to submit a bid to the clerk's office. The vehicles are available for viewing out back here at the town hall, and we have the keys if anybody would like to take a look inside as well.
And these vehicles are being sold as is, right? No guarantee?
As is, no warranty. And all that will also be indicated in the advertising. As is, no warranty, and all that will also be indicated in the advertisements that'll be going to the Beecher and the local paper.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
My only comment is I just want to thank the council once again. We've had our new rescue vehicle in service now for uh, you know, a few weeks, and it's just been fantastic. Lots of storage. It's just a wonderful replacement. We appreciate it very much.
Also, um, I'd like to add, we had two town employees. Um, one was our firefighter, Brian Wright. Brian volunteered to decommission the rescue vehicle from the fire department, and our newest deputy, Deputy Marshal Matthew Farthing volunteered on his work time as well to decommission the police vehicle. Commonly, we would pay close to five hundred dollars to have those vehicles decommissioned. Saved the town about a thousand dollars with both of those employees stepping up and doing it. Um, so kudos to them for saving us the funds.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, pass. Next. ARP application update. Tim?
Yep, there's a, a lot of grants out there and um it was a little bit concerning that we, we have hired grant writers in the past and paid them some money and um and nothing happened, but and here I went on to sam.gov, that's the place where you go to get grant money through the government, and um you need a unique entity ID number where you put in a bunch of information, including your social security number, then they, you go on your phone, they scan your face because they want to make sure who you are and all this stuff, but come to find out, nobody has ever done this uh for our town. So I've uh put in the application to get the unique entity ID, and it should be assigned this week, and once I have that, we can start applying for grants that are offered through the government. Um, we have gotten our money in the past, and this is a way to get additional ARP funds and other awards that are currently being offered by the government, so we're on it.
It's a good idea. Any other comments about that? Okay, next item is the cash management bank accounts. I, I presume we would uh take out bids to the different banks for requests, right?
Well, we have not done that, only because we bank at Horizon, and Horizon gave us a pretty attractive package, but we certainly can go.
Well, that's up to the council how you want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, let the council decide, but we're ready to, you know, Horizon gave us a, a, and seemingly easy way to do it. Mike and I were on a call with them a couple of weeks ago now, and um we were gonna kind of ease into it and just do the town and not the water department at this time, and then maybe in the future, depending on the appetite of the council, combine the two, but currently, we can um put the town money in some overnight CD stuff that's paying around four or five percent, and that's um about, well, currently we get around one and a half, so it will bring in a fair amount. I, I'm reluctant to say any dollars figures, but it'll bring in a fair amount of of interest income to the town that we don't currently realize for not a whole lot of effort, but if we go shopping around, which is absolutely fine, maybe we'll get a better deal. I just need to know and I'll, I'll make that happen.
Well, I think we definitely ought to do it. Uh, Mike, you want to make a motion?
So move that we uh take advantage of Horizon's offer. Move forward.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
For the town side right now, correct?
Well, I don't know why we aren't putting all of it.
Why don't we put all the money in there and get, I mean.
Why are we separating?
Well, we, we.
I, the council, if I'm not mistaken, we've talked about this on a number of occasions, and the thought was to get all the cash into interest-bearing accounts as best we could.
There was, I, I wanted to triple check that the water department is no longer a utility and.
Well, it, whether it is or not, you can still put it in there as a water department designation, just so we're earning some money while we're just
Yep, yes.
Discussing whether it's a utility. I mean, we're losing money every day and.
Yeah.
We've already covered this ground. When we passed the legislation, the ordinance changes two and a half years ago, I believe, or two years ago at least. You know, we changed the configuration of the water utility. I don't think it was ever, you know, we, it's, my understanding is it's under the auspices of the town council.
Yes, it has nothing to do with you making a decision whether it is or isn't a utility. State statute decides that. It's who makes the decision. So you have the ability to make the decision with regard to, as Mr. Coker suggested, putting it into account, even if you just want to earmark it as a separate water department count, you can't, but the, the water board no longer exists. The town council um oversees, and that's what part of the public safety board.
Yeah, I like, so those funds are under the auspices of the town clerk, if I don't, if I don't misspeak here.
That's right.
Those funds are under the auspices of the town.
Well, yes, all the same, he oversees.
They always have been, John.
Yeah. The decision is to where those funds are placed is up to the, with the council's approval is up to the clerk, I believe.
It, yeah, well, you guys can direct. It's always been under the auspices of a clerk, as Mary Lou was saying.
We can direct, we can direct what bank it goes to, and I say, let's put it in a bank to make some money, and let's do it right away.
And my understanding was that you guys kind of are down the road on how this is going to occur, that you already know how to do it and.
We are, yeah. We've had a proposal from them for a little while, and I can make it happen this week.
So the motion would be what?
Motion is to invest the money.
Yeah, all surplus funds in, in, I'm sorry, Mary Lou.
And two separate accounts.
Yeah, you can just have it segregated. It doesn't, right, the accounting of the, of the income for the water side and the accounting for the income for this, the town are always separate. They continue to be separate because it's different accounts. But the actual surplus funds can go into that account, I believe. No matter whether they come from account A or account B, they can put into a, an account at the bank. I'm talking about internal accounting now. They can be, the surplus funds can be put into an account at the bank now. Is that correct? For either one of those accounts.
What I don't know is how they'll set that up from an account perspective, because they're really two different entities from an account perspective.
They're really not. Well, I, I.
I'm just saying from the bank's perspective.
To clarify and allow you to move forward is to, you can have a motion, as Mr. Coker attempted to um solicit out of one of you, to have a motion to invest those proceeds or the funds, and you could just say in compliance what State Board of Accounts requirements, and then you can make the determination from there.
I was not referring to the what, what they are as an entity. I was saying how Horizon accounts for them. So if there's, there's two separate accounts, so I would imagine if you're going to invest the excess funds, one will go into what it's designated for that, the town water, the town account, the town operating account. The other one would be for the water department. But they both would be invested.
I, I'm glad that they're both going to be invested, but it's the town's money either way. There is no water money.
I understand. I'm just saying, all I'm talking about is the internal workings of the bank. I don't know how they can route those dollars from one entity to another.
Got it.
Do we have a vote on that? Here's the motion.
In my business with Horizon Bank, I have two separate accounts. You just have the name separately, all over the same thing, so.
Perfect.
In your case, it's town of Long Beach, how?
So to clarify the motion, we're, we, we want, thank you, the council, the motion on the table, I believe, is to put all the surplus funds, whether they're in a water account or a town account, into some sort of better interest-bearing arrangement than we currently have. And that's the, the deal that you and Mike worked on, and I think that's what we're asking to vote on tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
All the funds.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had a motion sometime.
We had a motion.
Yeah.
I think the motions also said, according to the town attorney, that it was, they would be under whatever the State Board of Accounts said.
In compliance.
In compliance was that.
There's a motion. You downed that. There's a second.
Correct.
Yes.
Can you repeat the motion then, please, for me?
Sure.
Deanna.
Who made the motion?
Well, I had the Mike Johnstone motion to take advantage of the Horizon. That's all I got.
Yeah, and then Mary Lou, didn't you second that?
I said, in, well, Attorney Willoughby Deanna said that in accordance with the State Board of Accounts, whether they, we se, well, they will be separate. We'll have the water.
Right, so can you just, so to summarize, can you just give me the motion?
Yes, Mike, would you do that?
All right, we're going to accept Horizon Bank, the motion is to accept Horizon Bank's proposal to invest the total of our balances in their investment CD product.
And do, and the second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
John Wall seconded now. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Woo.
Okay, we've already opened the bids for the paving. Next item is public safety financing decision. Are we in a position to even discuss that tonight?
Well, just by way of history, Mr. Coker uh suggested that we investigate a second alternative to bond financing, meaning a, a bank loan. Horizon Bank provided a proposal. John and I met with um the banker and the bond counsel and Mr. Sender, who is on, I believe, Zoom tonight, and we discussed those couple of options. Um, John, if you want to express what you thought.
Yeah, my, uh, my concern is, is we're getting some feedback, uh, we're dealing with a lot of money here, and personally, I would like to have a third-party look at the proposals that we have. I'd like to suggest we employ Baker Tilly to do that for us, to get a third, a second opinion apart, aside from the town of Long Beach, to make sure that if we go the private financing or commercial financing with a bank, we're doing it in the proper legal steps. Uh, it's a total different procedure than if you go with just straight bonding. There's a substantial expense involved in securing bond counsel. Uh, I haven't been satisfied with the explanation as to why, if we go private or commercial financing with a bank, why we have to spend sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for bond counsel on, on a commercial loan. But I'm, I'm sure there's reasons for that, but I haven't been satisfied with the explanation of why you can, how you can do that. I want to make sure, whatever we do, that we do it legally and proper. I don't want to get halfway down the road here and then we stub our toe and we got to start all over again. This was we've gone too far already, and that's just what I want, would suggest we do. So if, if you give me that authority, I can get ahold of Eric Walsh at Baker Tilly telling that we need some, uh, an opinion urgently. We don't want to drag this on more than a week or two more, but I, I don't know how we can uh make a decision on how we're going to finance that tonight. That's my opinion. My position.
Agree.
Sound a motion, John?
That, that'd be my suggested motion, that we, let me talk to Baker Tilly to see if we can get their opinion on.
And a cost for me?
And a cost.
Okay, and Mike, you seconded that?
Yes, I did. I didn't say it that way, but yes, I do second it.
Okay.
Okay, that's the motion seconded. Any other discussion?
The, the only thing I would bring up is our next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the lease, and we do have to keep that process moving forward, so we have to date, you know, expended quite a bit of effort to keep the financing process moving forward, the building corporation uh creation, the bond counsel is working on some of the legalities behind the bond movement. So right now, that process, unless we stop it, is going to continue. So in, if we get another individual in here to take a look at it relatively short, or I don't have a problem with it, I guess the only, the only issue I have is we do need to have this public hearing tonight to keep that process moving forward so that we don't trip up and, and wind up, you know, in trouble by May. Because the schedule for the bond proceeds right now shows that the bond proceeds are going to show up around May, and we've all been operating under that assumption, so if this can move on. And we may need a special meeting to entertain whatever you find out, so.
Well, I think we need a special meeting. Regardless, because Carl presented today, just today, at least that's when I got my email, the comparison between bond cost and a commercial loan cost. And, you know, I haven't fully digested that yet, but, you know, when you're dealing with two-point-nine million dollars of somebody else's money and not your own money, not that I have two-point-nine million dollars handy, but just saying.
Just in case.
Just in case, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're doing it properly and, and it's a big, it's a big bite.
So you have a motion on the table?
It's, it's passed.
We just.
We just had a discussion.
He just seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have any other discussion on that? John, you had.
Just, I have one other thing. I'm not sure it falls underneath this category as a second opinion, by the way, but I, I'm aware, and I believe everybody is aware on the town council, that we've received um interest from another bank.
Yes.
Uh, that would like an opportunity to bid on this proposal for the lending side of it as well, so I, I suggest whether it's under a separate motion or as a part of this motion um that we consider that.
Well, I think, I think regardless of which way we go, I think we got to put out a solicitation to, in all the banks in, in the area, at least then four or five offers to see if, if they want, and then to see how their position would vary with Horizon. I know Horizon will negotiate with us. I know that.
Right.
Because we have a lot of money laying at Horizon, and we can don't want to make it too public, but, you know, when you have a lot of money laying around, you have a little power.
Well, we might not have a lot of money.
Well, yes, we will.
On Matt Lawson?
So should we keep those two separate motions? Or keep more?
Well, I think Carl suggested that we uh put, put out a, a, yeah, Carl?
Has to unmute himself.
You unmute?
Yeah, good evening, council members. Yeah, that was my recommendation. You only received one proposal, and my thought is, let's we have, we can put together a term sheet relatively quickly. We can get it out, you can tell me the banks, and we can also suggest some banks um to send it out to and solicit their response. You know, as far as, you know, the first item about hiring Baker Tilly, you know, that's totally up to your call, but I would maybe suggest before you do that, inferring additional cause, maybe we have another call with Jimmy Shanahan and your counsel, Chris Willoughby here, and myself, to go through the questions. Um, you know, we did it with the banker last week, but I don't know that we had adequate time to fully answer all of your questions. So I kind of suggest we do that first, but that's, again, your call.
Well, yeah, well, my, my suggestion is I want a third party that's not involved with the town of Long Beach to get an unbiased opinion to make sure, not that Jimmy and Carl don't know what they're doing, but I don't know what, I don't feel comfortable where we are right now. And until I can feel comfortable with it, I, I just want to be real, try to do the best we can with the information we have. I just don't feel like I have enough information to feel comfortable with this big decision. That's my.
Just as a reminder, you have a motion and a second on that. The issue is if, are you authorizing Mr. Coker then to reach out and retain them? Don't know what their hourly rates are, what is their amount to spend, and, and, and I'm not suggesting that you don't go that route, so but there is a timing, and this is where doing things a little unorthodox as we've been doing catches up to you, right? We have this contract that's floating out there, subject to a financing decision. We have work that is progressing of which you're, every day you're getting deeper into this project, so I just want to caution you, you need to, you need to make decisions. It matters not to me which decisions you make, but you need to make some decisions on financing and take whatever steps you need to feel comfortable and, and report and answer to your public, and make sure that your questions are answered. You, you have an outlay that you're going to consider here on tonight's agenda for a project that, are you fully under contract? You haven't decided how you're going to pay for that, so I, I just caution you that as you guys have collectively agreed to keep going down this parallel process, for lack of a better description, some of these things need to start coming to a head quickly before you get too in-depth. You have the building that's ordered, you have things that are going to start progressing pretty quickly here.
So.
Do I have a vote on the?
Well, Chris brought up the issue of what their retainer is, and I think the, the, the motion was to have a discussion with Baker Tilly to see if they would be interested in this and give us a bid.
Right, exactly. That's the motion.
Because we've not approved them hiring them at this stage.
But I want to find out how soon they could do this and how much it would cost us.
And that's what we've approved.
Right.
And then that might then motivate a, 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 or require a special meeting to come along to discuss that proposal.
That's right.
Authorize them in a shorter time.
Yes. Yes.
Which you needed at least 48 hours for a discussion.
Right, 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 right. So do I have that authority? That's the motion.
I thought we voted on that.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Need a motion. You're going to go out and try to find out what they'll do for us.
All right.
All right. Do you need a motion style?
Yeah, I don't want to go out there and.
Well, the way we put it just now was that, if I understand Mike correctly, is you're going to find out what it's going to cost and how long it's going to take to do it. And then we'll decide. And then we're going to decide whether we're going to do it, right?
Yes.
So do we want any, make any action tonight about that?
Well, and do you want to authorize Carl, in the meantime, to solicit some other bids? Or you want to put the brakes on?
Well, I think Carl's suggestion is good, to solicit bids from the banks so we get all this information and then make a, hopefully.
We should pursue that, yes.
These, I don't know that these are motionable sorts of act.
No, they just showed that the councils support one way or the other.
Right.
So it gives some direction, John, so that's all.
Okay, so do we need a motion to have him check out some bank loans?
No.
So the motion is to request Carl to go out and pursue other bank proposals for financing for the public safety building.
Let's keep that one as a second.
Yeah. Put a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
The next one, do we need a motion about John going out and checking with the other?
I would think so. Yes. So let's take a vote.
I don't know what's appropriate in this case, but I. As a motion and second, yes.
Okay, a dollar amount of it now or something?
No.
No. You authorize me to do that? That's been a motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next. What do we have next, Chris?
Sorry, did you actually vote on the second half, which was for Carl Sender to solicit to the banks? I later the vote, the final vote on Coker.
We voted on the other one first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chris, do you want to read the additional appropriation resolution?
Well, you need to have a, so there's a public hearing. There's two parts to this. You have a public hearing first, right?
Right.
The public hearing is for an additional, to consider an additional appropriation. And to summarize, it is for, you know, you have an estimate on the cost of the project, which, and the Public Building Corporation building, which is approximately $2.9 million. And because that was not budgeted, there's a necessity to have a public hearing on an additional appropriation. So that public hearing has been appropriately publicized, publication in the newspaper, posted as necessary around the town. And so if you're inclined, it would be appropriate to open a public hearing on that additional appropriation, to hear those that are in favor and against, and conduct that public hearing that then authorizes you to move forward with consideration of the resolution, if you're inclined.
Okay, thank you. So we're opening the public hearing. And first thing we'll ask are comments on those of you out there, anywhere, whether you're in favor of supporting this resolution. If so, raise your hand and come up and tell us.
Anita Remages, 2300 Floramont, I'm in support of the resolution.
Thank you. Yes.
Ellen Lynch, 2225 Lake Shore Drive, I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Everybody online.
How about on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Who's all, how many is on Zoom?
Chris Collins, 2400 Floramont.
Okay.
Support.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Now fit, 2312 Foxdale Trail, I support the resolution.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else?
Joyce Man, 1607 Hope's Core, I support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Raise your hand. No one? Okay, so now we will go to anyone that is against the resolution. Anyone here in the audience that is against the resolution? Come up here and state, state your name and address and.
Right there, just here.
Right here.
Jim Deener, 2300 Fairway Drive. I'm against. Comments? I can make comments?
Yes.
This is, yeah, in opposition to the resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
And the reason being, as a fiscal conservative, having been in the financial services industry almost 50 years, I started doing some research. And here's what I found. We're a community of 1,100 homes. According to a 2021 census, we have 1,187 people. Trail Creek has 2,000, Westville has 5,300. And why do I say that? As a comparison, we also have an assessed valuation, according to the LaPorte County Budget Report, of $532 million for only 1,120 residences. So representing 9% of the assessed valuation from LaPorte, we represent 1% of the population. We have, we seem to have a perception of being a very affluent community. But for that, we receive approximately $1,300,000 in property tax revenue from the county, less than 20% of what we pay in. In addition to that, there's a lot of other fees. And we get fees from the Riverboat, Comcast, we get tenant rent, thank you very much. We get cell tower, we get, on our water bills, we all see fire protection, LEAF, and now stormwater. That amounts to another $364,000, believe it or not. So we have a grand total of about $1,700,000, $1,800,000 coming in. Last year, we had a proposed budget of $2.5 million, which, by the way, was 2.5 times what Westville and Trail Creek were. And their populations are much more than ours. We actually spent more than that. We wrote checks last year in the tune, and this was from all of the town council meeting minutes of $2.7 million. So we actually, we spent more than we brought in. In addition to that, in this greater detail, but in my time here, we have a lawsuit that's pending. And that is in the amount of $510,000. It was filed and received, I guess, January 30th. We knew about that we owed this money back in August. And this is, and I'll read this very quickly, if I might. "The commitment between the town to reimburse the district," and that's the Michigan City Sanitary District, "for the project related to the expenditures, this is with regard to the sewers. Regardless of whether it's completed or not, the town shall reimburse the district requirement within 60 days of it being determined that the district cannot pay." So we're on the hook right now and the meter's running. It will now include attorney fees as well as 8% interest since August. And I did not go to law school. I still have my soul. But I bet the ranch, we're going to pay something for this. And if we're on the hook for this, along with everything else we've got going to, and we bought a truck, I guess we're buying a truck, that deal has been signed, sealed, and delivered. We don't have, I don't think, the capability of borrowing enough money to do this $2.9 million project. And that's why there's been some other arrangements being made. And I think, John, you have the right idea, having some parties take a look at this who do not have bilateral interests involved in this program, okay? And some people might call it conflicts. I'll refer to it as a bilateral interest. There's some people who can benefit from this, who have benefited, who have been paid, you know, one of our, obviously with that. So I would like to hope that you will look into it and go to great lengths before you embark on another $2.9 million for 1,100 people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
Bob McFadden, 2714 Duffy Lane. I'm looking through this and I'm trying to piece it together to see what's happening. But it seems to me that we're increasing our debt substantially. And this is in terms of taking the money and selling, or selling pieces of our real estate to a separate corporation and then lease that. And what I know about leases is primary automobiles, leasing an automobile. And what happens is you pay your lease for like three months and then whoever you're settling the lease with, they come back and tell you what they'll give you for, you know, what you can get, get the property back for. And they can, you know, that's not necessarily a given, you know? So what are we, what's this town putting us into? I mean, with the council, putting us into from an expense perspective? We might have a piece of property back here that we won't own and then what, they can use it for leverage? You know, that's what I'm concerned about. We should own that property. Why are we selling the property to somebody else that's not affiliated with us? Man, I have some difficulty with it. I can't make sense out of this in terms of what I'm seeing. I would not recommend this from just financial consideration. And I'm not a lawyer or anything. I'm just common sense in terms of what I do. I don't lease cards, I don't, I'm against that. But we'll have the same issue that you have with a car as far as if you're going to sell that property and go get into a lease. I don't think we should be getting into leases. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Here I come again. Nola Gertner, 2302 Fairway Drive. And I'm here right now just asking questions. It's been a long time since I sat on the Michigan City Plan Commission and the Park Boards. So things may have changed and I may not be totally up to date on policies and procedures. I'm really here to talk about this corporation that has been formed, the Long Beach Public Building Corporation. I want to know, have the articles of incorporation been drawn up? Do we have copies of those? I know one of the three men that are involved. I don't need the other two. I don't know what their business background is, what their financial understanding is in investments or arrangements such as this. I also would like to know that if this property is sold to another corporation, are they a public corporation? Will they be paying property taxes on this property? I know my experience in the back past has been that there are corporations that are formed, like with school districts, they enter into this, but that particular corporation is a not-for-profit. So I don't know if that's how this corporation is working, where we're going to stand with the taxes. I would like to know under what statute this was filed. I would find that very interesting. And my question is, to follow this gentleman, at the end of the lease period, do we buy this back at X amount on the dollar? Or do we continue to lease this on and on and on in perpetuity? Or what happens if they decide they want to sell this property? Is there something in this lease, in this arrangement with them, that states this cannot be done? And so, Mr. Wall, or Dr. Lemay, or anybody on this commission, I would love to just have a cup of coffee and find out what I don't know. So I thank you and I thank you very much for your consideration about let's do this the best way we can.
Okay, anyone else in opposition? Anybody on the Zoom? I think you have, okay, well, we're going to, the gavel's going to come down here, so. All right.
Okay, now, I'm just, I'm confused. Ernest Summers, 2711 Elbridge Way. And I am confused. This is on the agenda as an additional appropriation of $2.9 million, not to exceed $2.9 million. Is that in addition to the $2.5 not to exceed that was passed in December? Or is that just 4,000 more? I mean, maybe 4,000 more?
I mean, are we going to answer questions in the public hearing?
My suggestion is that you allow the comments to be made and you don't engage in conversation here, but you're allowed to do whatever you want. You're the council, so you get to do what you want.
I mean, a lot of questions asked.
I agree with that. I think that you can supply that information. My suggestion to you.
Answer any questions. If we want to have another informational session, we could do that.
Procedurally, you should have the public hearing and make, those who want to make comments, give you questions, allow that public hearing. You can supply this information. I do not suggest, just procedurally, that you engage in conversation about it, but I certainly encourage you to take the questions in and be able to supply all of the information. The purpose of what you're doing now is conducting a public hearing and accepting comments for and against.
So Ernie, submit your comments or tell us your comments.
I just did the first one. The second one is, has this been run through the Board of Accounts to see if we're going to be offending our credit limit?
Okay.
Third question is, have we got an opinion from Sender or some accounting firm as to whether this is going to be a problem with our debt limit? Those are the three questions.
Thank you.
It's all recorded. She can get it open at any point.
Anyone else? Comments? Bob?
Bob Voice, Stop 29. It seems like the town is going down a rapid hole here. All this revolves around not being able to afford what you want. Plain and simple. We wouldn't be sitting here discussing this if the money was available. And what's going to happen here, this isn't a short-term loan. This is nothing short-term. It's going to go far beyond what a lot of us have left in our life. We're kicking this down the road, maybe 23, 24 years. We don't know what's going to exist down the road. We don't know if the fire department's going to exist down the road. We don't know if this company that's going to be developed is going to exist down the road. We don't know anything. And this is just a case of spending money you don't have. I think that everybody should just regroup and try to figure out what you can afford and work within your budget and not get crazy. You just bought a fire truck for $825,000 and some change. You bought a Rescue III, which is a glorified pickup truck, and now you want to build a public safety building that's just basically a fire station when you get right down to it. And it's not going to give us any better fire service. It's not going to give us anything more except debt. And I don't think that that's really what the town needs right now. I think that maybe it should just, you should just take a real close look at what you're doing and then make your decisions from there. I don't think you need banks and Carl Sender and all the rest of them telling you all this, you all this voodoo financing. It's not necessary. You tried it with the sewer project. That blew up, everybody's face. And this is just like a rerun. But that's really all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move that we approve the resolution.
Are you going to ask me what the ramifications are?
Well, I know what the ramifications are.
If you don't consider it. So because you have the public hearing tonight, it does not obligate you. If that's, I don't want to speak for you, but it's.
No, I know.
So ramifications, if you approve it, it allows you to keep moving down this process. You can continue it, you could table it and consider it at future meeting, depending on the answers. This resolution allows you to take the next steps that are required.
Could be continued until we get additional information that I'm hoping to get.
You can, and I, it will not, in my opinion, stop the process of what you're doing. The public hearing was an important step. That was publicized. But considering that resolution, in an ideal. That was publicized, but considering that resolution, in an ideal world, you'd have your contract approved, you'd have your decision made with financing, you'd do all this. It will not hurt the process to consider this resolution at a, a short turnaround at a meeting that sounds like you guys are contemplating a special meeting in the near future.
That's right. So I'd say the motion died for lack of second, but it will be continued and brought up again at the next available date.
Last item.
The last item. Probably comments.
No. First payment on a public safety building is due at the end of March. Approximately $50,000. So the first payment on a public safety building is due at the end of March. We'll have another payment due at the end of April, which I made you all aware of in the last couple of town council meetings. So this progress has been, this project has been underway now for quite a few months. The contract was signed and we've given a notice to proceed to the contractor and we continue to proceed along a parallel path with the financing. So we need an approval to pay that 50,000 tonight for the invoice. Have you got that total, precise total, Tim, with you?
I do, I do. I just wanted to add, I, I looked at the, I mean, it's a substantial check. It's 50,000, oh, where is it? Well, I have the check, so I'll tell you. All right, we'll have to use another envelope. Anyway, I looked at the minutes from February and Lemay motions to approve this contract subject to the execution and final decisions being made with the form of financing. So with that, I was, with that, my office had already cut the check and I kept the check in my possession for this evening with the understanding that we would discuss it. The check amount is 50,780 dollars. So I did not send it.
So I move that we pay that as part of our expenditures this month. I'm going to warn you all, we have a contract out there with this contractor. We authorize them to proceed. They ordered the building. They've made all kinds of expenditures. If you all are reneging on this contract, I need to hear that tonight. And I think the attorney may have some advice for us relative to that.
In my opinion, the approval of the written contract was subject to the decision on financing. So there is a contract, but it's pending that final decision. And this is where I've discussed already that you have this parallel universe. It isn't ideal and that I've discussed these things are colliding. So there is a contract. The contractor is and has acknowledged that their receipt of that is subject to approval of the finance, the mechanism for financing.
My understanding of that language was that there were two options on financing and we were going down the road with one or the other of them.
A loan or a bond.
Are you telling me tonight that we are not proceeding with financing on this project?
I'm not telling you.
No, I know you're not, but is that what the council's telling me?
What I've heard tonight is that we are stepping back to get a second opinion on it. We're going to expand it to other banks on the bank financing side. So in my mind, we have not finalized that aspect of what we've told the contractor, which would then validate that contract. So at this point, I don't believe we've, we have a valid contract until we've done that.
Well, I disagree on the validity of the contract, first of all. Second of all, if, if you're telling me that we're not going to continue on this and you're not going to pay that invoice, then I'll have, my next call will be to the contractor and the cards will fall where they may. There will be legal ramifications to this effort that you're making.
Well, I thought Bob's motion was subject to the financing and we haven't, we're either going to, we're either going to float a bond or we're going to borrow the money from the bank. One or the other.
That's what I need.
Which we've not decided yet.
I'm confused about this because right now you're telling me you're not going to pay what we agreed to pay last month.
Subject to financing.
Okay. That's not the way it was discussed last meeting, contrary to what the meeting minutes said. We talked about, I, I've told you guys that the expenditure was already occurring and you all agreed.
Well, how could we, how could we, if we haven't even agreed on how we're going to pay for this, how are we incurring bill?
Are you going to tell me that you were not aware that that 50,000 was coming in and we had paid it in March when I specifically told you that in more than one meeting?
And it, but, but it was subject to financing.
No.
Let me, let me read, let me read it to you. Lemay motions to approve this contract, subject to execution and final decisions being made with the form of financing.
Right.
Which we've not done yet.
But there were other discussions that evening relative to the invoices that were coming in, in March and April.
To me, it's all related, though, is, and, and the contractors acknowledge the fact that we have not secured financing yet.
Well.
Yes.
Are you telling me that you want me to call him tomorrow morning and tell him to stop progress on this and then whatever he's got to date and costs he's going to come after us for and we're not going to make any decisions until the finalization of the bonds? Because I'm confused about exactly where we stand.
I mean, if I agree to buy a house and I put an offer in on a house, that offer's going to say, subject to me getting financed.
That's not what the contract states, John. And you all gave me permission to proceed along the lines that we proceeded on, including the discussion of these invoices that are now in-house and we're required to pay. We had those discussions. It was very explicitly discussed at the budget and finance meeting, and I think Mike will back me up on this. And it was also discussed at the council meeting that these two invoices were coming in and in the interim period before we got our financing lined up, we were authorized to go ahead and proceed because we knew those dollar amounts were coming in in those two multi-periods. And the assumption was that we would have our financing lined up by May so that we could keep the progress moving. That was discussed at length. So if you're telling me that we're reneging on this deal, I need to hear that from you.
If I get this right, then we could pay these bills and the financing blows up in our face and we don't get the financing.
Right.
And we've spent 50 or 100,000 on.
Well, I got news for you. If, if, if the financing blows up, we're going to owe this contractor some significant dollars. As of today, it's 50,000. As of the end of April, it'll be another 25,000 is what he projects. And sometime in May, it'll be significantly larger dollars. So if you're telling me we're reneging on this deal and you want me to call him and tell him to stop doing what he's doing and assemble the invoicing for what he's got to date, I can do that, but I want you to understand two things. First of all, you're reneging on a contract that we have with him with a notice to proceed in the contract and you're reneging on, you're, you're going to incur additional costs because he's going to have to put the brakes on and all the quotes that came in under that design build bidding process will now have to be renegotiated. So your, your 2.9 is going to blow up in your face as well. Those are the consequences of what you're telling me tonight. And if you.
Well, I'd assume the contractor can read too.
Okay, we could talk platitudes if you want, but those are the realities. I'm done talking. If you guys do what you want, but I'm telling you, there are very real financial consequences for what you've decided tonight, to not pay his first invoice and you're telling me that you're telling him his contract is not void, that his contract is not legitimate because you've got some meeting minutes to say something. You, you made these decisions, you made these decisions at a number of meetings from about November till now.
Doesn't the contract say it's subject to financing?
The contract, the delivery of the contract, so, which is why the communication was made to the contractor that that contract will be in effect upon, okay, upon decision with regard to financing. However, as Mr. Wall has indicated, there were discussions, this is where the parallel and being unorthodox here of the way that this has proceeded timing-wise, is there is work being done. You did authorize a, a notice to proceed and some work being done to date. At, at some point, unless you're prepared to say we're not going with one of these options, we're not doing the project, which isn't what I'm sensing, that you're saying we're not going to move forward with the project. That, that could always happen depending on what the determinations for financing are. There's work being done that you previously authorized. So, you know, I'm not going to comment and say that you're subject to that entire contract because that contract, from the town's perspective, isn't delivered to them. It's subject to being, financing being approved. But you have authorized some work being done to date to try to keep the process going along. With, with the thought process that you'd be, the town will be reimbursed from those funds that are secured from your decision of the method of financing.
We voted for, to proceed with the project. We voted to authorize these expenditures that just came in, 50 and 25. We talked about it on a number of occasions. So if we're backpedaling on that, I think that's going to sour this contract significantly and I think there will be some ramifications to that. I would recommend we authorize to pay that 50 myself.
Got a motion?
I already motioned it, but you guys didn't second it.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Why can't we? We're going to have a special meeting after you talk to Baker Tully. Why can't we do that then?
Because that invoice is current right now and if we wait another 30 days, it's going to be delinquent and you're going to have another 25 on top of that within 30 days. So the contract has very specific invoicing and payment requirements in the contract. And he gave us a schedule of values, which I shared with you guys and talked to you about when these payments would be due. And under my, you know, what you directed me to do, I contacted that contractor and told him in good faith that we were going to stand behind our word and we were going to do what we said we were going to do, which is pay the invoices in the couple of months before the financing came in. And the characterization is the financing is, is, that the contract is contingent on the financing. The only way that language was, was something that I didn't protest at the time was, my understanding was that we were going to investigate two different avenues for financing. One was bank financing and the other was bonding. We all authorized the lease agreements and some of the other procedural aspects of the bond financing to proceed. So we issued, the building corporation has now been formed and we have the lease agreement that we all talked about and okayed at the last couple of council meetings. And I think the process is just going to continue unless we decide not to. If you all decide not to, there's some significant ramifications to that decision.
All right, it's moved to second. Any other comments? Con favor? John's motion?
I'm in favor.
Posed?
Posed.
Can you have a tiebreaker vote with the town clerk?
That's appropriate. That's appropriate. That's time to go.
I, I don't fully understand the, the financing on this. When, the bond, the, the loan and then the corporation. So in order for me to be in favor, I have to understand it better. So I would, I would say, or I can't make a motion here, but I need, and I looked at the bill, I think Deanna has the bill too. We said today it's like net 30 or something. So we have a little bit of time to pay the bill before.
The end of March.
Okay, so.
Court, contractually, we owe them that money at the end of March.
So I, I would, I would like two weeks to look at it or I would like time.
Well, if we're going to do that, then let's have a timeframe about exactly what our action plan is, John. I don't think it's fair to just let this thing slide.
A better idea tomorrow to get a phone call and I'll get back to you.
Because I need to notify this contractor that that bill is not going to get paid by the end of the month soon. Because if we allow him to continue down the road that we authorized him to go down on a number of occasions in our meetings, then you're going to incur additional debt if you decide not to go forward, which I don't think you can. But that's my take on it.
Okay.
All right, public comments?
Public comments, other than not about the fire station or?
Or anything else?
Manita Remages, 2300 Floramond. I have a comment that this particular council meeting, but council meetings in the past used to be kind of a sport where people would shout out, I can't hear you, name and address. They would line up in certain corners. It was unpleasant at best, at the least. And tonight was another indication of that. It's not fun and games here. There are important decisions being made. Voices can be heard, but, you know, I mean, for me to sit and I felt like I was a teacher with kindergarteners, you know, I mean, just show some common decency. I appreciate the time and effort that the council members, Chief Swistec and Chris Willoughby give to this town. I don't always agree with all of your decisions, case in point tonight. I think that this is not a discussion of voodoo financing. It's not just a glorified fire station. I guess we brought, bought a fire truck. Come to the meetings. I talk to people about that. Come to the meetings. This is not just new. And I'm a little stunned by, I mean, I understand that you need to understand the financing more, but this is a decision that again, has been going on for months and months. So I hope that there is a timeframe set by you tomorrow and I hope that, that this can be worked out again. It's not just a glorified fire station. Chief Swistec has spoken about how it would be helpful. And, and to Clerk Perry, I'm a little, I, I guess, I, I don't even think, oh, I'm not shocked anymore, but the fact that you, you keep referring to this sick leave, although I was out last week, that you couldn't meet with this potential employee, I don't know on what planet.
I was never asked. I didn't know we interviewed anybody. I was never asked. And I was here last week, three days. I was not asked to meet with anybody.
I forget when your medical leave was, but I believe the week before that, it was two hours. I mean, you can be found here sometimes on a Tuesday and Thursday and you can debate all you want that you're here. You are not here, Clerk Treasurer Perry.
I don't think you have authorization.
You do not.
Where I am ever. So thank you for your comments.
Well, again, I, it will play your game of cutting me off, but I agree, I mean, you are not here, I, you know, and I think that you should be. And the fact that you character, that you said at a recent budget meeting, no one ever told you about this all-important federal report. You were here almost a year, so you can continue to play the blame game, you can continue to thank your staff, but you are the Clerk Treasurer. You have a responsibility to this town. We have people sitting behind me who talk about the council has a responsibility and so do you. So, you know, use your time here well and try to do your job. Thank you.
Okay, what else? Okay, council comments?
Bob McFadden, 2714 Duffy Lane. Now, what I see here now in regards to how much this project's going to cost us, I have a hard time envisioning exactly long-term how much it's going to cost because of this leasing deal and what can happen in the future. It's a big question mark for me and that's what I'm concerned about. At least if we go to a bank, we know what we're going to be paying, okay? And then we don't have this issue later on and finding out how much it's actually going to cost. And from what I understand, the town council has already agreed upon a cap, okay? That's short-term, I guess. So long-term, that cap doesn't mean anything because we don't know how much it's going to cost us. So that's all I wanted to say.
Jim Deaner, 2300 Fairway Drive. You know, there's a couple of attorneys sitting here, so I won't bore you about law, but I've read a lot of contracts and a contract is what's written in the contract. So there could be some other assumptions and that could be misleading to people, but it's what's written in the contract. So I might suggest, because I understand what Mr. Wall is saying, if the contractor is already working and incurring its expenses, maybe the best idea is to say, hey, until we get financing, it's time to stop. So there will not be any more charges incurred. That could change the timetable, but it is what it is. If you don't have the money, you know, you don't get to play. So and whether it's going to be financed with a loan or by a bond, that has not yet to be determined and there's a lot more conversation there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? No? No comments? I'm not going to entertain any. Do the claims, Tim?
John just asked me a couple of questions on the register and I don't have all the answers, so if you want to kick the register signing till later on, that's okay. But I'll tell you the town checks, 19584 to 19665 totaling 184,598.83. And again, I don't have the detail on all of them, so if you want to wait to sign, that's your choice. Water Department checks, 54666 to 54678 totaling 97,572.45. February payroll totaling 74,497.42. Oh, I will, I do, but, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve, but if you want to wait for detail, that's okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve or not.
I second it.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I make a motion that we approve the claims for the town checks, the water department and the February payroll. and the February payroll.
Second.
And is this subject to? No, it's not subject to. Those are just informational, Tim, like I do once in a while. When I look through check registers, I see things that are relatively significant dollar amounts, and I just want to know what they are.
I'll kick you an email tomorrow morning.
Kick that back to me with an email or a text like you've done before.
Okay.
Just let me know what those are. That's all. No big deal. I just was curious what they were.
I made the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, good job. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, don't call me.